18. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Jason Allison of Terranova, followed by the Pledge of Alleges. If you'll all please stand.
Tonight, before we have the invocation, Mayor Riggle let me know that because of the scheduling and so forth that this body has not had an opportunity to observe a moment of silence for the tragic loss of life in Florida at the high school. So before we do anything, could we take a moment and just observe a moment of silence on their behalf? Father God, we invite you in to give wisdom and discernment to these men and women who are leaders of our city. We invite you to come in to bring the peace that only you could bring into a world that is filled with strife, that is filled with discord, that is filled with disagreements and contention. And we ask you to bring your peace into this room even tonight. We thank you that you are God and that you have provided this city with capable leaders. And I pray your blessings on each of them and their family and that you would watch over the proceedings even tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
The Pledge of Alleges is a tribute of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much Pastor Allison. Item four is approval of some motion summary. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Do you want to do on each separately?
Please.
Approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held on February 12, 2018 as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have the motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval of the motion summary of the City Council Retreat Meeting held on February 10, 2018 as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And approval of the motion summary of the joint meeting of council and the Delaware County Commissioners held on February 15, 2018 as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. We have been busy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Parking and Safety Meeting held on November 20, 2017. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting held on January 16, 2018. Item C, Resolution Number 18-11, a resolution appointing members to various boards, commissions, and/or committees in specifying the term of the appointment. Item D, Resolution Number 18-12, a resolution appointing a representative and an alternate representative to the Ohio Public Works Committee District 17 Integrating Committee for the period of April 2018 through April 2021. Item established March 12, 2018 at 7:20 p.m. as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 18-18 in ordinance amending section 933.09 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Delaware, Ohio regarding intoxicating beverages prohibited and repealing existing section 939.09 in its entirety and declaring an emergency.
What is the wish of counsel on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here in the audience that wants to come forward at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on down to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none to report, Mayor.
Mrs. Keller?
None.
Browning?
Parks and Recreation met and they're looking at non-smoking policies in city parks. So we'll probably see something coming down the pike on that and potentially a cricket field or whatever they'd be. Pitch, a pitch that they plan on, so.
Okay, sounds interesting.
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Mr. Shaffer?
By its committee means Wednesday, 14th.
Okay, thank you. Item eight is the second reading of Resolution 1810. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Resolution Number 18-10, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year contract agreement plus two optional one-year extensions with the YMCA of Central Ohio to continue to provide recreation management services.
Mr. Brown, will you start?
Yeah, this is just the second reading of a resolution that would authorize a renewal agreement with the YMCA for recreational services which we contract to the Y for. And the current agreement before you is a three-year agreement with two one-year renewals which would be done administratively unless directed otherwise by City Council. There is a summary of the changes that are part of that agreement that accompanies the packet. And Ted Miller, our Parks and Natural Resources Director, is here this evening to answer any questions you might have. Staff is recommending the agreement be approved this before you this evening. Thank you.
I can answer any questions, but I mean, one thing with the YMCA, we've had a good partnership and we've changed things along the way. Like, you know, we request something additional. They've been very good in dealing with us. So they've been a good partner. So I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have two items. Under item 2K on this agreement, I think we need some additional clarification. This goes back to the reporting, which has been substandard to now.
George, are we done with mingle pool 2K? Did we?
Yes, yeah. One of the things that I think needs to be spelled out is that we need tracking and reporting to include the number of persons in each category because we're talking about categories. But then not only the number of people in each category and the revenue of each one of those categories. I think we need to be very succinct in what we're asking for. And I would like to see that included in the wording on 2K. And then in 4D, which goes-
I can't even find 2K. Where?
Yeah, so it's on the ground.
Okay.
Right there's 2K. And then in 4D, just basically include that same type of verbiage because again, that goes back to program reports and make certain that those requirements that I just dictated are also in that section 4D as involved. Those are my only comments.
Ted, don't you typically do those reports to the rec board?
Yes, we, you mean the programming like on 4D is that referring to? Because the programs, they typically have an annual report that goes through the news based off the programs that they were involved with the city. Is that the program you're referring to?
Yes, yes, in the same type of numbers. Because in the past, we've gotten either headcount or we've got revenue. I want to make certain that we have headcount and revenue because one without the other really only provides part of the picture. So I just want to make certain that's called out there also.
And in our quarterly reports, we can add it to their annual report. But in our quarterly reports, we try to track the headcounts of each event, each program that comes through there too. So we can add that to the annual report also.
If I have a question, I guess I'd direct this to Ted and Tom. The, I did not have access to any pre, like last year or the last agreement. Is there any changes? I think Councilwoman Keller mentioned, you know, anytime there's contracts, if there's any changes, if they're highlighted in yellow so we don't have to read, you know, new contracts compared to old contracts. Is there anything that's in this one that is different than one, besides the money, besides the fees?
The memorandum that's part of that packet, we tried to pull out the changes and define them just by sections and then pull all those changes out and then kind of highlight those in that memo. So, but you know, the biggest is the shelter rentals is one. We're also going to track more of the maintenance of the buildings themselves to make sure that we're, you know, tackling all the maintenance issues that do come up. The other thing is we also, there's a maintenance cost that basically the YMCA was obligated to $9,000 a year towards the building. We're going to bring that into our fund so that we can take care of a lot of those issues. Instead of, you know, coordinating with two different people, we're going to just take that $9,000 into our fund and not pay the Y as part of that fee. So I think it'll be a simpler process doing it that way.
But you know, I'll just ask, you know, regardless of this agreement, any other agreements, if there's any changes, we always want to see that, some sort of highlights. We know what's being omitted or added.
Right. And he did go overall, obviously, the last meeting that you weren't able to come to. So do you want, do you want these changes made before we vote on it, George?
Don't necessarily vote on this yet anymore, but I do want to make certain that those additions are communicated and are part of those ongoing reports, like I say. The reports in the past have been subpar and want to make certain that we're getting all the information in a usable packet. So.
And I believe, George, you are one of the designees together with Councilwoman Keller on the advisory committee to meet quarterly to review this. So hopefully, we can get follow-up that way. But we'll include this in our transmittal letter to the Y in terms of the changes that you requested.
Any other questions, Mr. Miller? So what is the wish of counsel? You want to vote on this? You want to take it to another reading?
I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-10.
It's a resolution.
That's how it is, yes. Then I just move for approval of Resolution 18-10.
Second. I have the motion by Mr. Jones and second by Mr. Browning.
Will we have a little bit of further discussion?
We sure can.
Okay, so just procedurally, if we approve this as it is, it's just approved as it is. How do we go back then and make a change to something we've already approved?
We're just authorizing the city manager entering into an agreement. So the agreement's not.
So you can just-
I would, what I'll do is incorporate the changes that George has requested in the, in the agreement that we're transmitting and put that into form of a, you know, a summary letter as well.
Okay, so it's okay to just?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I have motion. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Number nine is second reading of ordinance number 1808. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 18-08 in ordinance adopting section 718.80 through 718.95 of the Ohio Revise Code.
Mr. Spencer?
Well, it says Darren.
Yeah, Darren's stuff, but I can talk about it if you want.
It's this one over here again.
Sorry. Well, go ahead, whoever wants to summarize it. I mean, Darren included a note in last week's packet that the legislation that we reported was thrown out of the court. Therefore, we're recommending adoption of this tonight. I believe there's other steps that Dean can detail that will follow what you're doing tonight, but we want to be in compliance with the law.
And yeah, just to touch on the litigation in Franklin County, the court not only denied the preliminary injunction, they actually dismissed the case outright upon denying the preliminary injunction. But the way the ordinance is worded here would still preserve our right basically to appeal. Should that be appealed down the road, I don't know at this time whether or not council is going to end up appealing the court's decision. But either way, it's, the way the ordinance is worded will preserve that option for us while still bringing us in compliance with the law.
They're somewhat two different issues. The fact that the state, through their appropriation ordinance, decided to provide another option for businesses to file municipal income taxes was already approved by the state. What Darren was involved in was the city's participation with a legal challenge to that. Well, as Chris said, that's been decided. The implications to us from an income tax standpoint is, yeah, we have to adopt this ordinance, which we pretty much assume would probably be the case. It'll change operation a little bit, how we communicate with the State Department of Taxation, what information we get back. But some point, I have met with Darren and Chris. I think fundamentally, we need to revisit our whole municipal income tax ordinance. It was, similar situation happened a couple of years ago. We changed, mandated certain consistency issues with several, you know, across the state for municipal income tax legislation. And so ours kind of got cobbled up, our tax ordinance back then. And then with this add, we've got kind of a hybrid. It kind of reflects Ohio Revise Code language and our own language. We really need to just clean it up. And so you'll probably see something coming forward at some point down the road, just getting the whole income tax ordinance that we have more readable because it's kind of a hodgepodge right now. This will get us to the point. The state did mandate that we incorporate this into our tax ordinance. It accomplishes that task and we'll, we'll deal with what the implications are.
So any other questions for either Chris or Dean?
So we're recommending adoption this evening. I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 1808.
Second.
I have the motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
For the approval of ordinance 1808.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we're not quite to 7:30 yet. So let's jump down to item 14, consideration of Resolution Number 18-13.
Resolution Number 18-13, a resolution in support of a sister city visit to Baumholder, Germany.
Thank you.
This is really the same action City Council took back in earlier part of 2017 in regards of declaring a trip to our sister city a public purpose. Therefore, the use of tax dollars can be used to pay for that trip if council deems it to be a public purpose. You did it for the Sakana visit last April and what's before you this evening would ask that you consider it for the Baumholder visit. We have been invited by the mayor of Baumholder to partake in the official opening of their cultural center, which our delegation was able to visit when we were there a few years ago. That's now opening in May and was before you this evening is open for your consideration.
We didn't visit it, it was a promo.
Yeah, it was a, yes, it was a prototype, right.
As part of the fact sheet that mentions about reaching out to find Veterans Station of Baumholder, how's, what's the process behind that?
I believe there's something I don't believe. I know Mr. Yocum posted something today, issued a press release about it and it's on, I believe, Facebook and other social media.
Great.
This is a call for people who have served at the garrison in Baumholder to be part of a photo that we would like to shoot and present as a gift to be displayed in the cultural center. We discussed that with, we had a Skype call, the mayor and I and Councilwoman Keller last week regarding the visit and we discussed that and they're quite interested.
I'll move for the approval of Resolution 18-13.
Second. I have the motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's go down to 15, consideration of Resolution Number 18-14.
Resolution Number 18-14, a resolution authorizing the advancement of cash from the general fund to the capital improvement fund.
Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. This resolution was discussed in conjunction with the project to make improvements to the former Gazette Building anticipating of leasing a portion of that out to get to a point where we can move forward with a potential improvement project. We will need to ultimately sign construction contracts that say the city has money on hand or in the process of being collected. But this resolution does, allows us to advance money from the general fund and then ultimately align a potential bond issue related to that with future borrowings, probably more than likely the early part of next year. So it just allows us to move forward with the project. The numbers that are included in the legislation are rough estimates and are purposely at a level probably higher than what they'll need to be because we can, we don't have to just because there's an amount in there that advances, it just authorizes up to a certain amount. I would entertain any questions you may have related to that.
I mean, this can just be, if you're interested in just a first reading tonight, that's fine. But this will allow us to advocate moving forward.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did we say 1.185 before?
Right. Again, I've got the number in there, 1.75. I don't know what, that's probably way higher. We don't know what the amount's going to be. But just because it's in here 1.75 doesn't mean I'm going to transfer, went to transferring whatever the amount is based on whatever bids come back.
One of the things we're trying to get a handle on right now that we want to provide counsel before ultimately we award a bid or spend any money is, to the extent that we can make any other improvements to that building besides just the 1.1, because what the 1.1 is, is just to get it to the state where Cohatch moves in. It doesn't include any things, second story windows. It doesn't include the connector. It wouldn't include any enhancements. And to the extent that we have resources available through Impact These perhaps to pay for those things, we at least want to get what those prices are.
And this is just the envelope, as we call it, for Cohatch, right?
Yeah, it's just vanilla.
Right. The 1.1, yes. The 1.7 might be the difference between that and if we decide to do all of the windows on the second floor plus we decide to build the connector so at least we can say we're eventually going to have the expansion capabilities for that building. So that's what we're, that's why it's right now just kind of a, we just don't know what those numbers are. We have some estimates, but that's what I've asked Jackie to work on in terms of her involvement on this project, so.
All this does, it doesn't commit us to any contract. It just allows us to, in short order, if that's what council elects to do, move forward with the project. We'll advance, I don't have to wait two or three months on a bond financing, which will just push the project back further. This enables us to move forward and sign the contracts. Also attached to it is there's a declaration of official intent, which enables us, if we're able to, we may not be able to issue tax exempt debt because it's a private purpose, but it does allow us to still potentially issue tax exempt bonds at some point down the road. And again, that number's at 2.5 million. It's a not to exceed and it'll only be whatever council approves as far as cost with the facility.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 18-14.
Second. I have the motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Mr. Shaffer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to read item 16, consideration of ordinance number 18-18?
Ordinance number 18-18, an ordinance amending sections 933.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Delaware, Ohio regarding intoxicating beverages prohibited and repealing its existing section 933.01 in its entirety and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city by allowing the city to begin beer sales at the start of the golf season and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Okay, we're going to get a two-minute summary.
This was set for a public hearing for the next meeting. This would allow beer to be purchased at Hidden Valley Golf Course. This was something that was discussed by City Council during the budget process, you requested and approved funding in the budget to make that occur, but we have to get the wheels in motion regarding the actual licensing and getting things set up. So what you're doing tonight ultimately is considering amending your code of ordinances to permit that. So it is set for a public hearing in two weeks, I believe, right?
Okay. All right, we'll jump back up to item ten, and Elaine, if you will, read ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen into the record.
Ordinance Number eighteen dash eleven, an ordinance for Delmore Dwellings Corporation for approval of a rezoning amendment to allow a PMU planned mixed-use overlay district at two fifty Curtis Street on the north side of Firestone Drive on approximately three point six four acres on property zone POI Planned Office Institutional District for an actively owned and managed forty dwelling unit, low and moderate income affordable housing development. Ordinance Number eighteen dash twelve, an ordinance for Delmore Dwellings Corporation for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU planned mixed-use overlay district at two fifty Curtis Street on the north side of Firestone Drive on approximately three point six four acres on property zone POI Planned Office Institutional District for an actively owned and managed forty dwelling unit, low and moderate income affordable housing development. Ordinance Number eighteen dash thirteen, an ordinance for Delmore Dwellings Corporation for approval of preliminary development plan for an actively owned and managed forty dwelling unit, low and moderate income affordable housing development at two fifty Curtis Street on the north side of Firestone Drive on approximately three point six four acres on property zone POI PMU Planned Office Institutional District with a planned mixed-use overlay district. An ordinance Number eighteen dash fourteen, an ordinance for Delmore Dwelling Corporation for approval of a comprehensive plan amendment on the future land use map from medium density single family to medium, to mixed use at two fifty Curtis Street on the north side of Firestone Drive on approximately three point six four acres on property zone POI PMU Planned Office Institutional District with a planned mixed-use overlay district for an actively owned and managed forty dwelling unit, low and moderate income affordable housing development.
Mr. Jefflin?
Madam Mayor, members of council. This is the public hearings for the four cases. Red the clerk. I'm going to walk you through a summary of the background. I will say that Planning Commission has spent the better part of two meetings, including public comment periods and a work session that, as the mayor knows, probably totaled somewhere in the area of seven hours' worth of deliberation on the case, so that's a good thing. We've been over, I think, many, many details, and they're all provided in your packet, but for the benefit of you and for the benefit of the public here tonight, who I doubt were here for the other things on the agenda, since they've stuck around, we'll walk you through some of these in a very summary format. First of all, the property is located at Curtis and Firestone. It is approximately three point six four acres in size. Here's an aerial photograph should we need to refer to it. This is very zoomed in, and we often provide you with these kinds of aerial photographs in a very zoomed-in way, and that's good as we're looking at the site and we want to look at some other elements. But I think here, I just want to say, there's a large wooded area on the west side of the property, you can see the large lot, single-family zone agricultural immediately to the west, the previously Salvation Army property to the south, and Hidden Ridge Apartments to the north, and you can begin to see some of the industrial uses to the west. I did take the opportunity to zoom out a little bit, just put it in a little bit more context, as they come up in the Planning Commission meeting as well, you know, what kind of context is this property? For us as staff, and I think Planning Commission concluded similarly, this is a quintessential transitional piece of property. Again, I think you could really see the industrial uses to the east, including the four hundred fifty thousand square foot industrial building off Park Avenue, Bowerly's, which is about twenty thousand square feet, Hidden Ridge, more of the residential character of Curtis Street to the north of Hidden Ridge Apartments, more industrial to the south of the railroad tracks even, and then you move in towards the west into our single-family subdivisions. So just trying to put it in a little bit of context and perspective, it looks so big when we zoom in, and the piece of property is three and a half acres or a little bit. So we can refer to either one of those should we need to as we move along. First of all, comprehensive plan, future land use map, and we do have a bit of a misalignment here, we've talked a little bit about this, between the future land use map and the current zoning of the property. This is, this happens particularly with transitional pieces of property, but the future land use map calls for medium density, single family on this property. It called for essentially that same future land use, it was a little bit different back in the nineties, but essentially that same land use back in the nineties, and prior to the Ambeth's rezoning, which rezoned this property to Planned Office Institutional as it is today. So we'll, we'll get more into that, but I want to show you the medium density multifamily of Hidden Ridge to the north, the actual, and again, this is another misalignment, institutional future land use map on the Salvation Army piece, which is currently zoned single family, and the light manufacturing to the east, which is currently zoned heavy manufacturing. So we have a bit of a misalignment between those things here. As you know, we're getting ready to start our update of our comprehensive plan map, so this might be one of the areas of the community that regardless of this case, we zoom in on, take a little, little bit more detailed look at this time around. And you can see to the west into the subdivisions, major open space on a site that is used as a single family and also the medium density single family. The other thing I want to point out, we always put up this map because it's handy, and it's definitely germane to any of these kinds of cases with comprehensive plan amendments and zone changes, but in the staff report, we also detail, summarize, summarize in detail, is that fair? Elements of the comprehensive plan that aren't just the future land use map. And as you know, it's about, I don't know, two inches thick. We use the document all the time, but there are a number of goals, objectives, and strategies contained within that plan, many of which support the case in front of you, some of which don't support the case in front of you, and part of what you have to do, what we did, what Planning Commission, and what ultimately you have to do is wrestle with all of that and come to a conclusion on balance based on the facts of the case in front of you. So that's just part of it. Let's move on to zoning. The zoning of the property, as I mentioned, is Planned Office Institutional, that occurred in the year two thousand, and it actually changed the zoning from single family, R3, to Planned Office Institutional. At that time, there was no future land use map change brought forward, as you can tell, we have this, we have this misalignment. This was, the zone change was a little before the current comprehensive plan, but the, the misalignment, I guess, continued with the current comprehensive plan, future land use map. So Planned Office Institutional, let's pause for a minute because I think maybe this has gotten lost a little bit in the shuffle of lots of hours and discussions and densities and height, calculate them and this sort of thing, but I just want to pause for a minute and let you read this and kind of remind ourselves what the purpose of the zoning of this piece of property as it sits today is, and particularly to highlight that Item B, compatible and effective transition between commercial, industrial, residential uses, and Item D, really to allow orderly and careful development of the uses in POI with their unique demands and often their mixed use arrangements, arrangements, parking, and accessibility. So these are sort of the preamble to the POI zoning district, if you will, which obviously can look up for yourself as well. Continuing with that theme, and I think, I think, again, this has gotten a little bit lost in the, in the shuffle of things, but the applicant in Delmore had a decision to make, and we sat with them early and discussed what their options were with respect to this zoning. One option was to simply pursue a conditional use permit under the POI zoning district, to, to allow conditionally permitted, you could see the range of uses on the left and the permitted uses, some of which are pretty intense, from vet offices to drive-through to congregate care nursing home, hotels, motels with restaurants, et cetera. This is a multifamily use, if you prefer to think of it as some multifamily, some where between congregate and residential care, that really isn't in our judgment, but it is multifamily rentals for particular clientele in this case. So their choice, which by the way allows a sixty-five-foot height limit, probably not likely anybody's going to build that on this piece of property, but it's allowable and something to sort of just understand as background information, so some pretty intense uses, really. So the choice was pursue sort of a traditional market rate developer approach, where you might just take a conditional use permit forward and maybe a development plan, does that be required, and pursue the multifamily nature of the site, or really do more of a community development, community-friendly way of approach, which is the harder way to approach it, and produces four cases in front of you. And that was to rezone the site to planned mixed-use overlay. You have the text in front of you, there are lots of items in that detailed text, but again, that's sort of have a few apples-to-apples comparisons here. The height limit is thirty-five feet in that text, that's roughly what all of our residential areas require, and in part, that's because these roofs are proposed as being highly, highly pitched, which is typical of very high-end single-family residential development. One of the things we did is to better align what I just went over with you, the comprehensive plan map, although not perfectly aligned it, okay, is to move single-family into the permitted use category. We can't presuppose that Delmore Dwellings is going to get their grant and move forward with this. So we as staff and Planning Commission also have to think about, well, what happens if things don't move forward, and what kind of condition and zoning do we leave the property? Well, one of the ways to better align it with the comprehensive plan, future land use map, although not perfectly, is to move single-family into permitted, really cut down the list of uses that could be put on this site, and put in as specifically as we possibly could Delmore's use, and in fact, make that limited. Part of the limitations, you can read it for yourself and ask me any questions after I'm done, but part of the limitations are that they will own and actively manage this development, and if they don't, this reverts back to a conditional use permit, and they'll have to go back through the process. We also added significant design requirements that you can read in the text as well. So I just, you know, again, the very first meeting, I gave Delmore credit for taking the harder path, and I do that again, I think this is the harder path for them, but I think it leaves the community, should you approve this, in a better, more defensible, and better-aligned condition long-term for the community. Well, obviously, it still allows them to pursue their, their proposal, else they never would have brought it forward. So the original proposed site plan that we first started going over with Planning Commission had two phases, forty-eight units, Firestone's on the bottom of the, the screen here, and Curtis is on the right-hand side. It proposed about a hundred forty, hundred fifty-foot permanent preservation of the trees, that's the green, the yellow are the buildings, five buildings of two stories each, eight units in each building, and one building of one story with eight units in it, and you can see the stormwater pond. This is a preliminary plan, obviously, a final plan would have to follow, we'd have to work with our engineering department, the applicant, to finalize details, again, should it be approved. So things like exactly where does the stormwater, the pond go, and exactly what kind of configuration is a guardrail required along Firestone, those sorts of things. Through listening, I think really to the public comment at Planning Commission, the applicant heard that the site felt really too, too intense and too dense to try to provide this transition we just talked about, and so the applicant removed building C here in green, and that's what's recommended before you tonight, is forty total units, removing the eight units of that, and what's green on the screen, one of the eight-unit buildings, and leaving the rest basically as it was shown before. In part, one of the comments from one of the Planning Commission members was, for most multifamily developments, we see some outdoor common space area that can be used by residents, and, you know, they didn't see that in initial plan, and so they, they questioned whether that should be included as well, removing this unit provides the opportunity to include some of that on this plan for final plan. And it will all be developed in one phase rather than two. So the proposed landscape plan, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, except to say that, and Jim Wilson and I have had an opportunity to just sort of discuss this briefly, and I think we're both interested in your comments and the public's comments, but this meets the, the basic requirements and zoning requirements of the text, but I think one of the things to consider is perhaps really augmenting the landscaping that you see here along both Firestone and Curtis, and as it fills in through the years, it will help kind of soften and buffer this use from the roadway and vice versa, but also present sort of that Firestone entryway that would be more appealing. There's a lot of landscaping here in that regard, but there could be some more as we go into final development plan as well, and I think Delmore is open to that idea. So I want to show you the proposed building elevations, this is the one-story building. Again, I think this is cement fiber siding, the Delaware Blue Vein Limestone, high-pitched roofs with varying roof lines included as well, and though it is a relatively big footprint building relative to single-family development, obviously, it's not particularly big relative to the Hidden Ridge directly to the north of it and its single story. One of the questions coming in Planning Commission was, can we see interior layouts very specific to this unit, and that's what you have here, I just want an opportunity to show them to you as well. This is the so-called ranch building, the one-story building, and you could see it's small bedroom areas with bathrooms in each unit, surrounded by a common living, dining, and kitchen area. If this had five units in it, we would call it a house, which is a big house under our zoning code, there's eight units in it, so it's a little bit different variety, again, another reason to do this overlay zoning, to account for the unique nature of the site and this unit type. So here are the two-story units, and probably a little hard to read up here, maybe easier in your packet, but these show you the front elevations, long Firestone and the side elevations of the two-unit buildings. The building footprints here are about twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred square feet or so. I was looking over the course of the last several weeks, and houses, single-family homes in Delaware are anywhere from seventeen hundred square feet, or some a little smaller than that, to twenty-five hundred square feet in building footprint, so this is a little bit bigger than those, but pretty close, and not as big as the seven, eight-unit apartment buildings of Hidden Ridge to the north, just by way of example, but obviously a little bit bigger than the ones to the west, with the exception of the very large single-family homes immediately to the west of this site, which is, it's just a big home. Again, I want to show you the interior layout of these, Planning Commission asked that question as well, these are fully-contained, single-bedroom units, and by the way, in the single-story unit, it may turn out, and there was some conversation at Planning Commission, that each one of those units might turn out to be, have a kitchen and that sort of thing, and not as much of the, the common area, so something to keep in mind, but more, more like what you see here in that same one-story kind of elevation. But for now, this is what's approved, part of that is related to the tax credit process that they're going through. As you recall, we went through that process with the Delaware Hotel, and it's lengthy and detailed, and sometimes things change a little bit. So what's before you tonight? There's a rezoning amendment to mixed-use overlay, I think I've gone over that in pretty good detail. There's a conditional use permit that is required to apply the planned mixed-use overlay. There is, I almost skipped one, there is a preliminary development plan, and that's really regardless of which vehicle we choose here, we'd have to go through the development plan process, in this case, preliminary development plan. And there's a comprehensive plan amendment. One thing I noted for Planning Commission, it came up as a question from them, I think it's come up from some of you, and I want to just address it upfront, is that the comprehensive plan amendment does not have to be done. There is no better example than it wasn't done on this site in the year two thousand, for whatever reason, I wasn't here, but maybe someone remembers, it wasn't done. So you don't have to do it. Now, to be consistent with ourselves and consistent with other planned mixed-use overlays that we, you've applied throughout the city, at least in the time I've been here, it makes rational sense to change the comprehensive plan, future land use map designation to mixed use, doesn't change any of those other goals and objectives in the plan, which, again, you have to, you're going to have to weigh and those and wrestle with those. I want to just point out that, and I've done this, I think, for four straight meetings now, so I'm just going to do it again for you, to, that these cases come down to fact-based analysis, the facts of the case, public comments are germane and facts of the case, as are all the material that we've provided for you, I feel like we've answered every possible question that can come up, but maybe not, we'll find out. But you should ground yourself really in decision criteria, your zoning amendment, comprehensive amendments don't have specific criteria in the code, but they're really guided by general land use laws and principles. Your development plan reviews and your conditional use permits are guided by Chapter eleven twenty-nine point oh nine, Performance Criteria in eleven seventy-one, and in your conditional use permit criteria at eleven forty-eight point oh two and eleven forty-eight point oh three. Those have been provided to you as they were at Planning Commission, and I would encourage you to do a fact-based check-through all of those and determine for yourselves and then collectively, on balance, whether they pass those tests. That will make the most defensible decision, either way you decide this case, or I should say, any way you decide this case, it could be maybe a third way you decide. With that, I'll say that your Planning Commission does recommend unanimous approval. Staff continues to recommend approval of this, of these cases as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Jefflin?
Just have a quick one, Dave, I don't know if it showed it on there, I'm just trying to verify while I was reading the notes, there's currently sidewalks in the front on Curtis and down Firestone, so there'd be no need to...
Correct.
No sidewalks would need to be installed.
Yeah, I guess the red line went over here, yeah, Firestone has a sidewalk, it's actually designated as a bike path, and it connects on to the west, and, and actually, you could, you can get to the Y that way, and then Curtis has sidewalks, sidewalks were actually a city project not too many years ago, maybe Tom remembers exactly, but not too many years ago, put in on Curtis Street, you can kind of see, whoops, if I can make the hand work, you can see it right here, a little bit, ah, well, it's there.
So there's no gap at all?
Well, there's, they're on either side of the street. Bill, do you want to just elaborate how we did that project with the sidewalks? This kind of came about when we did a water project, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we, we built a walk down, where there wasn't a walk on Curtis Street, we put walk down, we had to go back and forth on sides depending upon topography and access.
So make sure that it connects all the way down across?
Yep, all the way down to William Street.
Yep, and for the applicant's responsibility that we would normally incur to them, there are sidewalks on their furniture property.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jefflin? Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
I'm Jim Wilson with Delmore Dwellings.
I'm Mike Sheen, I'm a local attorney representing Delmore Dwellings. And I think our, my address is on record.
Thirty North Franklin Street, Delaware.
Is there anything you would like to add today?
Well, you know, Dave hit, hit all the high points. I don't know that I've ever been involved in a project... I don't know that I've ever been involved in a project that had more care and consideration than was spent by the planning commission. Staff did a superb job in preparation and evaluation. As an attorney that represents people that come into on zoning matters, Dave and I, or Jim and I were talking this afternoon, it's very rare that I get sold that a zoning change may be worthy of consideration. Here, we didn't need to do that. This project could have moved forward, maybe all the little nuances wouldn't have occurred. There was a trade-off. The good news is that Delmore Dwellings was willing to partner. Jim, from the very outset, from our very first meeting, outlined his willingness to cooperate. I have never had a client in my 38 years of practice that has been more open, willingness to meet with people, to set up meetings, to go to their homes, to talk to them. And I can tell you, it has been exhausted. That you just don't see every day. This is, from a historical standpoint, for a number of years, my wife and I lived two doors up on Curtis Street, what was affectionately known as the old Playhide Hall. Ed Playhide was my father-in-law, and this property was known as the Raleigh Norman Property. Raleigh was an asphalt and concrete builder, and has raised business out of that location. This area has developed over the years, and I think that many of the demands that you have put on have been beneficial to the community. You've, you know, with Firestone Drive, you had a connectivity that we didn't have. All that traffic used to be routed right down Curtis Street. One of the things that, in addition, that, it's certainly in the packet, that my client has agreed to pledge $40,000 for the turn lane improvement off of Curtis Street. I'll leave that to the engineers to figure out how that gets done, but that's what it is. You know, we're here to assist you, to answer any questions that you might have, but it's, this has been, I think, a very beneficial process for everybody. Mary, on the planning commission, you know how much time and effort was spent on it. And there were a lot of tough questions. And my client listened. My client listened when they said no density was just a little too high, even though when you mesh the numbers, it wasn't all that much higher than things that are in the neighborhood. For instance, as I indicated to Dave, if you took the same zoning as is in the subdivision to the west, you could have had approximately 11 lots, residential lots on that three acres. And with a good engineer and a good land planner, you might have squeezed in 12 or 13. So, and that would have significantly added to more traffic. Most of the residents don't own cars. You know, they use what public transportation we have available, or their families assist in transporting them to and from grocery stores, to and from appointments. So it's a controlled and limited situation with regard to traffic. As the joint indicates, there'll be two points of access. The access point that currently exists, the current driveway that exists off Curtis will be closed, so that also moves that access point very close to an intersection of Firestone and Curtis. So we're here to assist. Jim may have some comments that he wants to make, but we're here to answer your questions, and we would ask that at the appropriate time that you consider supporting planning commission's recommendation in our application. Thank you.
I might just have a couple quick, general comments to open things up. If there are questions regarding the technical merits of the application, I certainly will try to respond to those. The first thing I'd like to do, though, is acknowledge Elaine's smooth and eloquent reading of all of these actions at what is now a fourth meeting. It's a mouthful. Thank you. You know, the first remarks I made at the initial planning commission meeting, which seems like a long time ago at this point, you know, I expressed what I hoped for in the process. I understood from the very beginning, when we made the decision to go down this path with the rezoning, that it would probably come with some added difficulty and maybe an element of added stress. But the one thing I hoped for, and I expressed it to all that were in attendance, was that the process would be one that still displayed an element of kindness and civility. These type of situations, you know, the type of project that we're proposing to do here, it's pretty commonly known, acknowledge it, all over our state, our country, that these things are not without controversy. They just aren't. It's just the way that our communities are, I suppose. And I'd like to say that, you know, I believe that the residents of Curtis Farms, as well as the support folks who have come to these meetings to support this project, have done just that. I think it has been done with kindness and civility, and I'm glad for that. You know, the thing we've tried to do incrementally throughout this process is really try to move from an us and them type of a conversation to more of a we conversation. And it's not an easy thing to do, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, is we all are members of this community together, and at some level, we all do have concern for each other's well-being. Now, I think that's what makes Delaware a remarkable community, and a place that, you know, not to disparage any of the communities, but, you know, unlike Powell, perhaps, where people are proud to live, I think that in Delaware, there's a certain love for this community that people have here, and that it isn't all about the tangible wealth of the community. There's other things going on here that make this community a good place to live, that people place a lot of value on. You know, I'll also say that sometimes in these difficult processes, you know, it creates opportunities, and one of the opportunities it creates is to develop relationships with people. People are forced to talk to each other, may not have otherwise. And I think I can honestly say, and I don't think that the leadership of the Curtis Farms HOA would disagree with me, that while we still may not see eye to eye, and I understand that they still would prefer that this project not be built down at the end of the street, it's not in their neighborhood, but it is at the end of their street. And that matters to them, and they prefer it not be built there. But, and we've had conversations, a lot of conversations, the most recent one was when I spent two hours yesterday afternoon on a Sunday, sitting around the kitchen table at one of the Curtis Farms HOA, with three of the board members from the HOA. And we had a two-hour conversation, and it was a civil conversation, and it was, we agreed on what we could agree on, and we left understanding there were some things we just still didn't see eye to eye on. We had another meeting on Wednesday evening last week that concerned, that dealt with the concerns around public, the perceived intersection between mental illness and public safety. People, again, don't see eye to eye on that issue, really, and I think that what we wanted to do was remove that conversation from a public setting, where it isn't necessarily an advisable or appropriate conversation to have here, and take it into a private setting. We had invited a number of people to come to that meeting, including the leadership of the local mental health system, a city councilman attended, the chief, your chief of police attended, and the executive director of the statewide national alliance on mental illness attended as well. He came up from Columbus for that meeting as well. So there were some people there that could speak from knowledge and a factual understanding of these issues, and we wanted to create that opportunity. It's, people get busy in their lives, and unfortunately, none of the folks from Curtis Farms were able to make it that night, but nevertheless, we had a good conversation amongst the folks that were there. So I guess I would just close by saying that, yes, we are a private, not-for-profit corporation. We are a business. We were established here 28 years ago by residents of the city of Delaware, and we've kind of quietly gone about doing what we've done for about 28 years now. And we haven't, unlike a lot of not-for-profits where their bread and butter is fundraising, what we do is a very expensive thing, and it's very difficult to finance what we do with grassroots fundraising, when your projects go into the seven-figure range. So we haven't really promoted our organization in the community in terms of having to be a widely-known, not-for-profit organization. We've had to do some calculus over the years, I guess, in terms of the trade-offs of that decision. You know, on one hand, you can, we can be highly visible, but in doing that, we may garner some support for our mission. But unfortunately, I think we're pretty certain that we would also garner opposition to what we do. And quite frankly, what we're trying to do is create homes for people in this community, places for people to live who don't have a whole lot of options in that regard, and need support in order to live in those homes and be successful in the community. And we just have never felt that promoting our organization was worth the trade-off of stigmatizing the homes that these folks are going to live in. We don't do, you don't see us doing a ribbon cutting on the front page of the Gazette with the address for property. It's simply not worth it to us to draw potential stigma to the homes, the future homes where these folks are going to live at. So to the extent, you've never heard of us, I'm sorry for that. You know who we are now. And, yeah. And, you know, I guess I'd close by saying that there's no doubt about it. My first priority here is the commitment to the mission of our organization. It's my job, and I'm glad to do that. But, you know, an organization like ours really can't be successful in a community without also having a commitment to the community where you have a presence. And I believe that we are committed to this community. I believe that we are a very responsible property owner. I think that there's many city staff here, you know, that we work with line staff here in terms of people like Dwight Wells, who's a zoning code officer, works in the planning and building department, who would tell you that if you were to ask him, does Delmore take care of problems? If there's a problem, he would tell you, yeah, they do, and they usually do it within a couple hours, and when I let know there is one. I'm not sure that all rental property owners in this community could make that claim. We spend a lot of money maintaining our properties and taking care of them. This property is going to be a property that's likely to have a construction budget approaching $4 million. I don't know how many other developers are going to come onto this piece of property and spend that kind of money to create the architecture that we're proposing to create here. It's not going to be a detriment to the entryway to Curtis Farms. It's going to be an enhancement, in my mind. And I think that, you know, if the project is built, I think other people will agree with that, too. I'll close by saying that I think we all know that in real life, the disabilities, whether it's a mental or a physical disability, a developmental one, they don't discriminate. They really don't. Any family can be visited by, you know, serious disability at any point in time. And I'll just tell you that our organization is here, whether folks are opposed to us or not right now, that our organization is here to serve all the families and individuals in this community now and in the future, with the supporting housing resources that we have to offer to folks. And make no mistake about it, there's a large unmet need for this kind of housing in this community, in every community. We have 57 people on a waiting list, and I have people calling us every week with a situation. The most recent call I got was from a grandmother who lives out in eastern Ohio near Zanesville, who's calling because her daughter is busy working during the day. She was calling on behalf of her 23-year-old granddaughter, who's been born and raised in Delaware, who has autism. And the daughter prefers to stay here. She sees Delaware as her home, and even though her family has moved, her mother and grandmother, she wants to stay here, but she's, there's a housing crisis developing for her, and she needs supportive housing. She works, she cleans the food court and the restrooms out of the outlet mall, and someone helps her get out there and back to the day. But, you know, a project like this would be an ideal setting for her, because there'd be people there to look after her and make sure she's got a safe, supportive home to come home to at night, where people are paying attention to how she's doing. But yet, she's free to come and go and live her life and work a job in the community. So those are the general remarks I have. I'm just trying to give you a sense for who our organization is, and what we do, and who we do it for, and how we do it. So if there's questions specific to this proposal, I'd be glad to respond to them.
If there's one thing that I would like to add is that, is that in 1989, 1990, the state housing authority came, and another number of agencies came to all the communities throughout the state of Ohio, asking whether we would be supportive at all levels, township, cities, villages, across the board, if we would be supportive of this helping resolve some of these needs at the local level. I happened to be the mayor at the time. We had a great council, as we do today, and the council voted unanimously to support this kind of activity, the need. We didn't know what the form was going to be. We didn't even know about a Delmore dwellings being created. We just knew that there was a need, and we needed to support it. There was only one other community in Delaware County that voted in the affirmative, Radnor Township. So out of all Delaware County, fastest-growing county, 13 fastest-growing counties in the United States, we were the two communities. And I think that your willingness and your support over the years has made that happen and continue to happen, to make Delaware a very, very special place.
I guess I have two other comments to add. One is, one is that, you know, we don't work in isolation out in the community. We work in partnership with a number of other agencies out in the community that deliver services to folks. And we also work in partnership with our police department. You know, there's a lot of collaboration that goes on to help, to assist folks who have some challenges in their lives, undoubtedly, to manage their lives out in the community and to do well as members of the community. And so, you know, I can't say enough about the level of commitment of the police force here to serve these folks in the community through the CIT program that they've partnered with, to have all their officers trained in intervening with folks with special needs out in the community. I mean, it's, I have seen these officers work with folks, and it is, you know, it is a credit to the department. When you look at some of the events that go on out in the world, unfortunate events with folks with mental illness and law enforcement, you know, it's a credit that things are done at the level of quality that are being done with here. The other thing I'll mention is, is that we do work in four counties. Delaware's certainly not the only community we work in. We've developed and we manage housing in four counties, in Delaware, in Morro County, Marion County, and Crawford County. So we have a presence to one degree or another in pretty much every community of any size from here to Bucyrus, Ohio. But Delaware is our home, and it remains the community where we do have the most resources in place.
Thank you very much. So then, anyone on council have any questions for the applicant? Look like you're pondering.
So a lingering concern I have is regarding the density. And I was wondering if there was any room... And I was wondering if there was any room for compromise there to bring that down. I know we've already removed one. I'm wondering if we could make it a little bit more of a transitional area between the Hidden Ridge and the neighborhood, if there was any room for discussion on that at all.
I think some of the factors that have us where we're at with this are that there's a lot of competing motivations here. And one of them is that we felt that there was an advantage or desirability to create buffer between the project and the neighborhood. And so we've left this large, stand woodlot, 140 feet wide at the west end of this property. Ordinarily, some of that could be taken out, and it would make this project stretch out and feel less, I guess, to the extent feels compact. So the fact that we've left that woodlot there does tend to crowd the project to the extent it does feel crowded. I think the other thing is that, you know, while in terms of the unit count, and again, there's been a lot of discussion about how you comment density, how you evaluate density. And I guess I'd let Dave maybe reiterate the various approaches to that. But, you know, as Dave alluded to, these tax credit projects are really hard. They're very complicated, and they require a lot of effort. And we have a lot of unmet need in this community for this kind of housing. So for one thing, we're desiring to have an impact here to the extent that we responsibly can to serve people. And I guess that creates some reluctance for me. We've reduced the initial proposal, which was recommended by staff at that point. We've reduced it by 17% already. If we take another building out, we've reduced this project by over a third of what we were hoping to be able to achieve. I guess my response at this point is that I'm reluctant to do that. I think the other thing is that we don't really feel that functionally that this project has a high density to it in terms of the number of people that are going to be living on this site. The reality is that the potential density of, the density of Hidden Ridge is absolutely higher than this. And if you look at the potential density of the R4 district to the west, it potentially has as higher, higher of a density. Mike and Dave are, they talk this language all the time, and maybe they're better equipped to participate in this discussion. But I don't have the sense, knowing how our properties function, that this density is going to functionally create problems for us in terms of what's going on on the site. We have four buildings over on Park Avenue, immediately, on the south side of Park Avenue, immediately to the east of the Ohio Wesleyan Soccer Facility. And we have 17 apartments right there that were planted onto very small lots back in the 1960s. And we have 17 residents living there at a much higher density than what we have here. And we have zero problems over there in terms of the number of folks living there.
I think that if you look at the density, and Dave can report to you that there were many hours spent on that discussion point. But, you know, whether you use the, you know, the numbers vary based on what data you're looking at, but most often, I like to use a number of about 2.7 persons per home. And if you were to, as I indicated earlier, if this were in line with the zoning that is very similar to what's in the development to the west, you would be in excess of 36 people, and that's only limited because you have the rotation and for traffic and stuff like that. So, you know, I think that what happens is, is it seems like a lot. But with this density right now, based on the apartments to the north, they're 10.13, and they're on about four, four and a half acres of ground. And this property, if you base it on the 40, you're at about 10.91. So it's not disproportionate. It does serve as an additional buffer, as Dave indicated to everyone that attended. There have been single-family developers look at this property, and the numbers don't work. So it is a transition. That's why, as was indicated, the wooded area was kept to the west to further add to the buffer of this. And then the two people, the two people that are most immediately affected to the west of this property were supportive of this project. They understood. Jim went out and met with them. One of the members of the household came to one of the meetings, and the other person came and spoke at the meeting. So it's, you know, as Dave and I like to talk about it all the time, when you're talking development, there's about 150 ways to do density. And it's, you know, and it's, you have to look at more than just density. You have to look at traffic flows, how much the traffic is added. You know, in the day, when we were all growing up, we were lucky, we had one house, one car at the house. Now, we're not two. We have a number of houses in the community now that have three carports and garages. So it, you know, there's just no easy answer, and we think that this is really a pretty good balance from what's to the north and what's in the general area. You know, it certainly is not, it's going to be higher density than the property to the west because those are A1 agricultural lands. But, you know, those are the factors we looked at. And then, the most important thing for Jim, and I want to make that very clear, is the cost and the demand. And the demand is there. The cost is another factor. When you can get grants, in the nature of what we're talking about here, it makes the numbers a lot more easy to justify. And I know that may not be the best answer you want, but we're being completely honest with you.
It becomes difficult to spread the fixed cost of doing this development when you begin to reduce the unit count by a third. You know, there's costs involved to do this, and it begins to become difficult on a per-unit cost basis to do this. I think another piece of it is that we will have ongoing significant operating costs to this property to staff this 24 hours a day. There's going to be a high level of support here 24 hours a day. And again, that's another cost that for years in the future is going to have to be spread across the number of units that are there. It's some of the economics of it that begin to make things more difficult. We want to do something that's high-quality, and I'm concerned when we start to squeeze either the development side of things or the ongoing budget for it. I'm not sure, I've had a lot of conversations with my friends over at Curtis Farms at this point. I really have. I mean, you know, they're good folks, and I get it. I understand where they're at, why they feel the way they do. I really am not sure that eliminating one, two, three, four, five living units out of this project really changes the calculus for them in terms of their, how they feel about the project.
No, I think you're misunderstanding, though, maybe what my point is here. When we're looking at densities of complexes that we approve, 10.91, I forgot the number, 10.91, is quite a bit higher than what we've done maybe the last 10 apartment complexes. And so my fear is that when we approve this one, we're setting a new bar for density. And we have other complexes coming on our future agendas where this specific topic of density is a concern and kind of a hanging point for the approval of those projects. So that's kind of what makes this density stick out for me as a red flag, that if 10.91 is too much, then it always has to be too much. And I would say, for me, 10.91 is too much.
Well, you take the 10.3, that's just based on the zoning classification. But when you look at the units, the 60 units in Hidden Ridge, you're talking probably somewhere between 150 and 180 people living there. To me, and I think Dave and I have always kind of hit a commonality of understanding on that, you know, I know what the codes are trying to do, but the reality is, what are you talking about? You're not talking about just the one person per apartment. You're talking three people per apartment. And that can add significantly to the activity in the area and, you know, that's, but that, because of a few more feet of distance, you know, you can get that. This is a piece of ground that has set vacant. Once the organization that got the zoning change made the decision not to do it, it has set vacant. Well, there's a reason that it sits vacant. For a developer to come in there and do that kind of development, even a single-family, makes it virtually impossible from a cost standpoint. The cost, it's tough enough, I mean, you know, in this development, but it makes it even tougher with...
Yeah, Hidden Ridge are all two- and three-bedroom units. There are no one-bedroom apartment units in Hidden Ridge. So in terms of the people per acre, it's much, much higher density than what will be present on this site here. I wouldn't come in here expecting to put 40 units of three-bedroom apartments in here. It would make no sense to me to do something like that. But, you know, I think when you look at, when we had the overhead view of this whole area to the west and the developments occurring out there with single-family, you know, depending on R3, R4, I mean, there's, I couldn't begin to speculate what the real potential density is of some of these neighborhoods that are R4 with some fairly small lots and four-bedroom homes in them. I would guess that many of these single-family developments are functioning at a higher, much higher per-person density than this site would be. I understand that, I understand the precedent issue, though, in terms of going forward with other developments. I guess I would say that maybe there's some thought that might need to be given to that. I think that our society is becoming, we're aging as a society, and there's going to be more caregiving needing to go on. There are many, many people in this society that are unfortunately not well-prepared financially for retirement, and there are folks who are going to, there's going to be, there's going to be a growing, not shrinking, need for safe, decent, affordable rental housing in the future. And it's exceedingly difficult, I think, to build these smaller units and do it in a way where the numbers all work and to meet that societal need that's going to be out there. So, yeah. We've done a lot of infill development in this city, and this is the first rezoning we've done. We felt that this made sense in most respects. I guess if council were to come and tell me this isn't going to be approved at this density, I, you know, I suppose I'd have to give some thought to that, how we would respond. I just, I don't want to commit to doing a project where the numbers don't work in the long run. I don't want to handicap this project in terms of operating budgets right out of the gate and have to live with this for 30 years, have, this community and our organization have to live with this for 30 years with simply a project that's just not cash-flowing in the way it needs to operate responsibly.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, at this point, we've only had three people sign up that wanted to speak tonight. Is that correct? Okay. Because we can take a break if somebody else wants to sign up. I see a lot of people fanning themselves.
I'd like to, before I leave the table, I haven't done this at all the meetings prior to this, but I know the Curtis Farms folks made a practice of it, but I didn't really want this to be a numbers game. But I'd like to at least acknowledge the family members of folks with disabilities that have come up to this microphone and shared some of their personal stories. They're very real, and they're people that are residents of this community. And folks have showed out in numbers tonight, not, you know, not so much to support our organization, I don't think, while many of them probably do. But I think a lot of the people that have come here to speak, some of whom I didn't even know before, who heard about this proposal, they came here because they're concerned about this issue. They have their needs out there that are unmet. And so I guess I'd just like maybe to ask folks who are here that are concerned about supportive housing to at least the availability of our community to maybe raise your hands to... Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Okay, so you don't want to take a break? We'll just keep going? Okay. We may need to take a break. Oh, first one scratched up. Okay, Martha Faust? If you would come forward to the microphone?
Okay.
And then when you sit down, you're going to give us your name and address for the record.
I'm really nervous.
It's okay. We'll be jumped, we promise.
Okay. My name is Martha Faust, and I am a mental health consumer, and I've been in my apartment for over 10 years. And Jim Wilson with Delmore is one of the nicest, considerate, headstrong people that I've known. And if anything goes wrong with the apartments, he's right there, you know, to have somebody to fix them. And no, I wasn't paid for this. I'm doing this on my own, and like I say, I'm scared. I think this project is really needed, and I was observing you, your offices. And a lot of times, people do not understand mental health issues and, like, some people might say retarded, but it's retardation. And, but to get with the point here, I think Jim Wilson is, I think he's got a plan here. And I think you guys need to open your hearts for the need of our people.
Can you give us your name and address? I mean, you gave us your name. Can you give us your address for the record?
46 Flack Street.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I live in Duplex. It's two apartments.
Okay.
And like I said, I feel safe there, and he's a good, Delmore's a good, you know...
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And if you'll give us your name and address also for the record.
I'm Karen Hart, 112 Milfcroft Place, Delaware, Ohio. And I am the mother of a son with a serious mental health condition, and I'm involved with the local chapter of the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Delaware and Moro Counties, and volunteer for many years. And one of the very important issues that a lot of our families face, and we, you know, provide education for families of those who are living with a serious mental health condition, is that they are very concerned about where are their adult children, or their siblings, or their spouses, not so much spouses, but where will they live? What kind of housing? That's a burden that we all have. You know, what will happen to our loved ones? And it's not only a community issue, it's a state issue, it's a national issue. So I just, you know, just encourage you all to, you know, give this really serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Brett Latta? I think it's Brett Latta?
Brett Latta, 376 North Sandusky Street for almost 20 years now. And I, Mayor, Members of Council, I thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I want to commend the city staff, the planning team. I feel like they did a pretty thorough job looking at zoning history and density calcs and all that sort of thing. There's, there were a lot of questions answered, I feel, throughout the process. I think there was one question that was left unanswered that I think I'm going to try to address tonight from this table. And Elaine, I don't know if you can pull up my spreadsheet at all. But while she's doing that, I just want to make a comment on the comprehensive plan. I think Mr. Epple has done a great job trying to explain that there's lots of competing goals and objectives in that plan. And some opponents have called out the future land use map being residential. And he's already talked tonight about how that was mischaracterized accidentally. I think the value in that comprehensive plan is not in how one individual parcel is mapped. I believe the value in that plan is in the overall themes that are highlighted in that plan, one of which is housing for all. Housing for all. So I think, again, this council is not bound, and I think the Planning Commission understood that they were not bound by one decision on one parcel that was made 15 or 20 years ago. That document is a flexible document. It's a planning tool. It's meant to be flexible so that you all and our Planning Commission can make reasonable decisions based on need. So that being said, you know, there's a one comment that can be made that is going to push this thing one way or the other. But I felt like one question that went unanswered throughout the process, again, all the discussion about density and parking and safety and whatnot, I think it all boils down to property values. And I don't think anybody answered that, that I know. So I thought I'd take a stab at it. I went on the county auditor's website, and I looked at all of Delmore's properties within the city limits. And I just looked at properties that were adjoining their land or across the street, i.e. across the transportation right away. And out of 96 different properties evaluated, I only found two, two, that had depreciated in value. There's one property I didn't include on that list in that analysis, 231 South Washington, simply because it was purchased last year. There was no baseline to compare to. Now, an objective observer would say, well, nothing on that spreadsheet up there is a 40-unit dwelling on a three and a half acre lot. And while that's true, your, our planning expert showed you a map. There's a nice 150-foot wooded buffer there. I don't think you want to touch those trees. I think the Curtis Farms folks would really miss them if this thing gets pushed across the finish line. So I'm not a real state professional. You know, I didn't make any adjustments for inflation. You know, their auditor numbers, I assume they just drive by, stick a number at it. But, you know, I didn't see any drag, financial drag on any of the adjoining properties. So I'm hopeful, to the extent that it can, that that could ease some of the concerns over there on Ms. Keller's side of town. And again, I think the applicant has done their level best to address residential concerns. So unless anybody has any questions about my research up there, all those numbers are objective, they can be verified. I didn't get paid to put them together.
Thank you for doing yourself.
Yep.
Okay, so is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Even only three signed up? Is it something that we haven't already heard? Get a name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Melissa Humbert-Washington, and I work at Salvation Army, which is at 340 Lake Street. So we work with Delmore a lot, trying to house people. That's what we do in our business, is trying to house people who are homeless. And I can say that right now in this city, there are people that are living in abandoned houses. There are people that are living in their cars. There are people that are living outside under bridges. There are people that are living in parks, that are living at gas stations. And most of these people probably have some kind of disability, and that's why they can't be housed anywhere. We've had people have to leave Delaware because they're not able to be housed anywhere when they don't have sufficient income. I would say single people who have fixed incomes are the hardest people to house here because of the lack of one-bedroom apartments. We have a sort of decent amount of two-bedroom apartments, but there's not really anything for single people. We have a permanent supportive housing program, but it's only for families. So it's only for people who have children. This project is going to provide something that we don't have here yet. So we are very much looking forward to it because it'll help people that right now we're not able to help at all.
Thank you. All right. Now there's the name.
My name's Dawn DAWN-Banks-MEIGS. I live at 142 Grand Circuit Boulevard. I wanted to say I hope you guys do approve this because not only is it going to be for mental health, it's going to be people with disabilities. I have a friend who recently moved from Columbus to Delaware. I'm going to tell you guys, there is no handicapped accessible apartments anywhere in Delaware except if you are over the age and you are retirement. You are retired and you're a senior citizen. There's nowhere. The friend lives in Cedar Court. The court made a ramp, not a very good ramp for him, but he's in a wheelchair, and he has to go down the ramp to get in his apartment. Cedar Court's not the best apartment in the area, I want to tell you, because they have not fixed his apartment. His pipe froze, it busted, it flooded his apartment, and it stinks now. He's looking for a new place. He went out of there ASAP. He reels himself all over Delaware. You will see him. He will reel. He takes data. He will ask people for rides. The one night, that was very, very cold. I took him home. He got up in the middle of the night, needed to go to Walgreens, reeled himself down to Walgreens, went back home, made it home, okay, and left something out. I think he ended up just carded at Walgreens. Went back, when it started snowing, his gloves froze to his hands, and he got frostbite. He's now in a nursing home in Westerville, getting rehab. If he didn't, he didn't really have a place to stay. He was staying in a trailer park that was not handicapped accessible. So this apartment complex would be perfect for him. But it's not going to be built till next year, from my hearing. So I would urge the council to please, please pass this because we need something handicapped accessible. Because I'm tired of seeing people with disabilities not being able to live where they want to live. And they have every right to live where they want to live. I'm lucky because I can go up and downstairs. I don't like going up and downstairs all day, but hey, it's good exercise. So I get my exercise in going up and down the stairs. But I like where I live right now, and I'm independent, and I'm able to. But for somebody that's in a wheelchair, they can't live in my apartment complex. It's not handicapped accessible. So I'm just saying, please pass this, because it would be great.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on all four different items. And look to council.
I just had a question. I just had a question for the applicant, and it concerns the project overall and whether there'd be any consideration to a good neighbor agreement. This is something I had spoken to an Adam H. official with a couple of weeks ago, and it's fairly common with projects of this nature. And I'm asking you now because I think it's, you have obviously a very good track record in the community, but this will be the first, if it's approved, it will be the first project with this type of, this many units. And so that would be one of my questions. And I don't know if you're familiar with, I'm sure you are, but there are...
I'm intimately familiar with what you're talking about.
And it establishes obviously obligations, and I'm sure you would...
I'm intimately familiar with the agreements. I'm also intimately familiar with the organization who at some time in its past was having the experience of operating apartments in the Columbus area that were having some real serious problems. That, the organization's name is Community Housing Network, and they are essentially a large Delmore dwellings in Franklin County that operates something on the order of 1,200, 1,300 apartments throughout Franklin County. Tom, they, their organization was established in 1990, right about the same time we were. Their executive director, who retired recently, was a similar tenure to what I've had. So I know their organization very well. They ran into a situation down there where they literally had criminals moving in on residents. They had housing scattered all over Franklin County. And quite frankly, they lost control of their housing. And they had a big problem with drug activity, people moving in on residents, to the point where they literally had to relocate residents and board up houses. We work in a four-county area here. We have a presence in Delaware, Cardington, Montgiliad, Marion, Galleon, Bucyrus. We don't have anything of that nature here anywhere. We have no neighborhood relations problems, period, in four counties. We're a good neighbor, and there's nobody out there that is calling us or calling you saying that we're not. I think that if we were to have those kind of calls coming and that kind of conflict, it would not serve the interests of our organization well to have those kind of complaints and calls coming. And we, at that point, surely would be willing to engage in whatever kind of remedial activity we would need to repair those relationships in the community. However, because, and I don't, you know, I don't take all the credit, I'm part of our organization here either, for the success that we have in terms of our community relations and relations with our neighbors. I give credit to our residents. The folks who live with mental illness out there, who are neighbors to each other, who expect of each other that everybody does their part in their little communities out in Delaware, their little locations. They expect something of each other. They want to have safe, decent places to live. And they demand of each other that everybody does their part to make that happen. If we get complaints about anybody, about a resident or their conduct or what's going on in an apartment, you know who the complaint's coming from more often than not? It's coming from one of our other residents. And I think, you know, while I understand that, I understand the apprehension that exists. I understand, I don't know that the multiplier effect necessarily raises the risk of a bad experience at this site. Because for one thing, I would say that much of our housing out there is scattered site in this community with no on-site staffing. We're trying to develop a continuum of housing through this community that offers varied levels of support depending on the needs of the individuals that are being referred to us. Some folks do quite well independently out in the community with temporary support. But I'm reluctant, I'm reluctant at this early stage to have our residents being treated differentially from any other residents of a multifamily property in Delaware until there is evidence that we are not conducting ourselves in a responsible manner and that our residents are not conducting themselves in a responsible manner. I guess I'm a bit resistant to that. Should the day come, you betcha. You know, because it's in the best interest of our mission, and it's the best interest of the community, and ultimately in the best interest of our residents as a whole to do that. But I think it's premature at this point to ask that of our organization and our residents.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have another?
No, thank you.
Sure.
I got a chance a week or so ago to... Turned the facility, talked to the staff, talked to some of the residents, talked a little bit about their mission. And I understand concerns about density and those kind of things and the risks that might be involved. But in my opinion, the need for affordable housing in Delaware and the need for this type of affordable housing in Delaware is critical. And I think what we gain by doing this project is far more than what we risk for the neighborhood and for the neighbors. So I hope I told Jim this by email, but this project has my support. I'm very impressed with what they do and with the need for this project.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that, and as Dave had pointed out, has gone over in all these various hearings, is this is the consummate transitional area. And this just, in my mind, it fits. And like, I'm with Kent on this. It's had my full support from the get-go.
Go ahead.
May I ask a question?
Sure, may.
So there was discussion at Planning Commission about this people-per-acre calculation. Can you help me out a little bit more with that, Dave? Because I'm still hung up on this number of units per acre.
I was really hoping I wasn't going to have to get back into that.
I'm reaching here for another way to look at this that doesn't give me a number that I can't get behind. So I'm reaching for another number that might give more of an option there.
I appreciate that and the opportunity to help. In the cover memo, as part of the third Planning Commission meeting, there is extensive discussion on density in there. So I have two thoughts for you, Councilwoman. Number one, I think it's because of the unique nature of this use, which is one way to distinguish this development from any others that may come before you, or certainly, let's say, most others that come before you. In terms of, not only their clientele, we've been, I've been trying to be pretty careful to stay away from that and stay towards issues that are density and density, that sort of thing. But with respect to this issue, I think that's very much fine. Jim provided testimony at one of the hearings that they have about, I believe it's about 96% of his occupants are single-person occupants. And so that's the nature to the small size of the units or smaller size of the units. But also makes it germane to use a density calculation of people per acre, which, by the way, I was reading the 1964 comprehensive plan, and they describe density in the city as people per acre, not dwellings per acre back then, throughout that plan. So just, we have a little tradition of that as well in this community, and that's a pretty normal way to think about something. That may not be always the way to think about density, but in this case, I think it's germane. So all that said, under the revised proposal of 40 units, they would have about an 11-person-per-acre density. Hidden Ridge has between 26 and 51 people per acre density, and that's based on whether you use the... you use the census number of people per household, or the maximum number of what you could under the zoning code. So that's why you have a range there.
Can I stop you?
Yep.
How do you get the numbers for Hidden Ridge? Do you have a certain number of people per one-bedroom, people per two-bedroom?
No, you have to assume, because even in a one-bedroom, you can put a number of people in that dwelling unit. Those are big enough over there. So what we assume is, the census numbers are about what Mike quoted you, and it depends which ones you want to use, 2.47 per household, or 3.03 per family. So you can blend those if you like, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference at the end of this calculation. So, that's the lower number, based on the number of dwelling units in there, not the bedroom sizes. Under our zoning code, you could have up to five unrelated people in a unit. You could certainly decide, Councilwoman Keller, that for the one-bedroom units, that's not likely, but the two-bedroom units could be likely. Either way you go, let's take the low number, 26 people per acre, that's the low number, is still more than twice, almost three times, what their people per acre number is. And at Curtis Farms, I just want to throw that out for a single-family subdivision kind of comparison. Again, using the same kind of approach, you're between 10 people per acre, and 20 people per acre. Again, depending whether you're using the census number, or whether you're saying you have five unrelated people in that house. Now, you could have a family that's eight people that are related living in that house. Not very likely today, but you could. I don't know if that helps answer your question, or if there's something else I can help with in that regard. I would say, being a planned development, items of distinction here, from other cases that may come before you. Planned development, the small size of the site, the overall small number of units and people per acre, however you all look at it, on this site, and the unique nature of the clientele, are all facts in this case, that I haven't seen on another piece of property in the city of Delaware. Could we? Yeah, you could always say you could. So those are facts to consider in terms of distinguishing this, and how you may decide one way or the other, as opposed to other cases that may be around in front of you. Doesn't mean someone might go, well, you gave it to them, please give it to me. That's more political precedent.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Hi.
I guess for my two sons, I support the project. I'm like Kent and George, I've supported it from the beginning, and I guess I would say to Councilwoman Keller, I'm not voting to set a precedent. They came in front of this council, and this project has gotten as much due diligence as any I've seen since I've been on council. And it's a good project.
Would it be fair to say that the units per acre is not really a fair representation of what will actually exist here, because of the unique nature of the project?
I think so, yeah, if you're asking me. It is fair, and germane, to look at dwelling units per acre. That's how the zoning code looks at it, that's how we always report it. So I don't want to be unclear. That's a fair way to look at it, if you choose to look at it that way. But I think it's very germane to look at it as a, from an intensity standpoint, of use and people on the site. People per acre, in this case, is different than a market-grade apartment, it's different than a single-family subdivision, it's different than, you know, Delaware hotel, senior, low and moderate income. It's a fair way to look at density on this site.
Okay.
What is the wish of counsel?
I would say we need three readings, I would say.
That's the second reading. We had no one in position tonight. But that's up to you guys, if you want to go for a third reading.
Yeah, I mean, what I expected when I came here is to see, is to see a little back and forth, but seeing how we have 100% concurrence with everyone that's in attendance here, I don't see a reason to go to three readings.
I would politely argue back-
Thoughts?
-that our rules state that in controversial cases, which this has clearly been, given the number of emails, calls, comments, and information that was brought forth in the Planning Commission, that this would at least qualify as a controversial case to take to three. And since it's in my ward, I would ask for that.
Okay. It's up to you, the rest of you. I think it was controversial, I think it's changed.
Changed, yeah.
I think Jim has done such an excellent job, reaching out to the neighbors, reaching out to the other areas, that I think the controversy has kind of gone away. That's just my opinion.
That may be my read on it.
Yes. We have a Delmore dwelling. We have no problem taking this. All righty, then we will take it to one more reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a few minutes, and just, we'll take a five-minute recess. We're done. Well, we just-
We have financial-
Okay. We got financial. We're done. Somebody was like, "Run, run."
I'm not sure what it says.
She just kept talking about she's drinking.